I call this Board of Education meeting to order. Thank you so much for coming this evening and I hope that you will stay with us throughout this evening to see the wonderful things that are not only going on in our school system, but some of the business that we have to conduct as a board. I'd like to welcome our minister this evening, who is the Reverend Jim Asher from Verona United Methodist Church, to our podium where you will deliver our invocation. Thank you for coming Reverend.
You're welcome. I'd like to invite all of you to join me in prayer at this time. Please join me. Gracious God, we approach you tonight to seek your blessing upon this meeting. Grant wisdom to this board as they look at developing policies that impact all and curriculum that will be used to educate young lives. Guide them during this meeting and endow them with perseverance of character as they look at shaping young lives into responsible adults and future leaders in our community. Also let them not grow weary in doing well, for in due season they will reap a harvest if they do not give up. For all of these blessings, we ask in your powerful and holy name, amen.
Will you stand and face the flag? Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of the agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make the motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is the consent agenda approval. We have two board meeting minutes there as well as five other items. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next is the item that we really look forward to and that is our good news spotlight. And Mark Burus, our Director of Title I Services, will come up first.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Mr. Stout, thank you for this opportunity to share some wonderful news about our Academic Derby tournaments this year. Each year our Academic Derby tournaments challenge students to utilize their, not only their knowledge, but their thinking skills and their teamwork as they are questioned on a number of subjects included English, history, pop culture, geography, science, and mathematics, just to mention a few. This year we had some great matches and some great seasons and I want to start first with our middle school academic derby championship. I had the honor a couple of weeks ago to be able to moderate the championship match between Dixon Middle School and Trexler Middle School and the match was neck and neck throughout the whole competition. And I do want to congratulate Trexler Middle School for being this year's Academic Derby champions by one point over Dixon Middle School. So congratulations. And if I can, at this time if I can ask Ms. Jackson Principal, Susan Rogers' coach, and then I'm gonna call the players up and we'll do a trophy presentation. So please come join me at the podium. Samantha Ashley, Haley Futral, Tyler Martin, Corinne Nasau, JT Sandlin, Sidney Davis, Jolene Hutchinson, Will Mills, Michaela Selby, Riley Stone, Macalzy Videl, Caroline Kubis, Lilly Miracle, Annabelle Rocha, and Azelle Solomon. Let me reach back here and grab this wonderful trophy. Congratulations Trexler Middle School, this year's middle school academic derby champions. Let's give it a round of applause. Our high school competition this year was also a great competition and this year's high school academic derby team proved they were outstanding in their preparation and knowledge throughout the season. They have achieved what few academic derby teams have been able to do and that is go undefeated. So let us congratulate our high school academic derby champions Jacksonville High School. At this time if Coach Zernhale, Principal Dr. Lynch, and the team, as I call your name, please come join me at the podium for the trophy presentation. If team captain Owen Snitzler, Minnie Arkott, Diana Luther, Hugh Nizot, Kyra Nasau, Reyna Romero, Brian Roche, Davis Long, Roman Peterson, Davion Simos, Lizzie Coleman, Austin Daltry, Cal Quintero, and Minnie Arkott. Coach Zernhale, Dr. Lynch, come on up please. Please join me in congratulating Jacksonville High School. Thank you, congratulations again. And as they take their seats, I do want to mention that we had a couple of these team members that also participated on Saturday in the Dr. K.B. Gresham Rotary Academic Challenge where the Jacksonville High School team finished third among the competition with several surrounding school districts as well. So congratulations on that. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board.
Thank you. Next we will ask Dr. Beth Folger, who's Chief Community Affairs, to come and make the next recognitions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Stout. Very excited to share lots of good news tonight and want to start with honoring one of our very hardworking principals. We're proud to announce that Lynn Jackson, the principal at Trexler Middle School, is among 20 educators from across the country that's been selected by the Avid Center to serve on its design team. Ms. Trexler, Ms. Jackson, will you please come to the front? The first lady of Trexler.
You know Trexler is named after a Ms. Trexler.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's right.
I've often asked why we're not Trexler Middle School, because there's Richlands Primary, Richlands Elementary, Richlands High School.
We have a little history lesson tonight that Trexler Middle School was actually named after a person and that's why you don't fit the mold with the Richlands names. Well, Avid was implemented at Trexler during the 2004-2005 school year and under Lynn Jackson's leadership, the school earned recognition as a national Avid demonstration school in 2010 and it's maintained that designation since. Students, even those that are not in an Avid classroom, receive Avid instructional techniques, strategies, and best practices to increase student achievement. Ms. Jackson and other members of the design team will travel to San Diego March 3rd and 4th, I think that's coming up in just a few days, to discuss how to best involve principals and district leaders in implementing Avid in their schools. And also on the agenda is principal collaborative groups that can help spread the word of the Avid program across the state. Please help me congratulate or please join me in congratulating Ms. Lynn Jackson for being on the Avid Design Team. Now if Dr. Helen Gross and her colleagues from Carolina Forest International Elementary School will come forward. I'm pleased to share that Carolina Forest International Elementary School received the Lighthouse Award from the North Carolina Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development Organization. This award is presented annually to only three schools in the entire state. The three schools that are recognized for their innovation and for leading the way among other schools. The awards were developed to celebrate the success of our educators that worked so hard on behalf of our students in North Carolina. Congratulations to Carolina Forest, who was awarded a plaque and a cash prize of $1,000 during an award ceremony at the North Carolina ASCD Annual Conference on February the 4th in Pinehurst. I happened to be there to see it, it was incredible, and they were recognized again as only one of three schools in the state that are recognized as a lighthouse school. As a community, we know that there are many unsung heroes among us, even many in this room. Using a similar nomination process that's used to select the Golden Rule Award recipients, GateHouse Media, which is the new owners of the Daily News, partnered with Onslow County United Way to expand the pool of those so deserving of recognition and introduced its inaugural Lightkeepers Program this year. Individuals selected as Lightkeepers were chosen for their volunteer efforts in the community. Tonight, we would like to recognize five of our own unsung heroes, one teacher and four students who were selected to receive these awards. Is Ms. Shante Cooks here? If she'll please come forward. Ms. Cooks recently received the 2016 Golden Rule First Place Award in the category of education. She is a teacher at Clyde Irwin Elementary School and volunteers within the school to supplement the students' education. She also coaches the Clyde Irwin Egolets and Step Dance Team and she teaches etiquette classes to our young girls in our schools. Outside of the school wall, she's acted as the president of Aspire since founding it in 2009. And Ms. Cooks, we're so fortunate to have you as a teacher, someone who's so passionate about the youth and willing to mentor our young children, help them become a catalyst for change both inside and outside of the classroom. Thank you for what you do to our children and congratulations on the award. Also new to the youth awards, or to the awards are the 2016 Golden Rule Youth Awards. This award is for youth and youth groups and their families. Four of our students, Onslow County School students, were recognized for their services to the community. And I would ask for the following four students to please come up and be recognized. Justin Condry, Jeffrey Condry, Reyna Abruzo, and is Ms. Nguyen here from Northside High School? I think she was unable to make it this evening. But Justin Condry is a student at Dixon High who worked with school-aged children during the summer in Onslow County Parks and Recreation Program and he's also very active in teen court. He's involved in many other clubs and organizations at Dixon. And John is a student-to-student group leader. So congratulations. Jeffrey Condry, also a student at Dixon High School, and you may see a resemblance and you may recognize the last name, that they have a shared last name. Jeffrey also worked with young children at the Parks and Recreation Program and he's very active in teen court. Like his brother, he's involved in many, many clubs and organizations at Dixon High School and is also a student-to-student group leader. And he is also the president of the National Honor Society at the school. So congratulations. And Ms. Abruzo, excuse me, Ms. Abruzo, also a student at Dixon High School, worked with school-aged children during the summer, but she worked at the Onslow County Museum with the children. And she assisted setting up for events and activities during her volunteer work at the Onslow County Public Library. So I'd like to take a moment to congratulate all three of you for all that you do for our community and giving back to the youth and others in our community. Thank you and congratulations on this award. We always like to lift up our students, but we also like to lift up our staff members who are doing an incredible job as well. And the last recognitions tonight are for the North Carolina School Public Relations Association Blue Ribbon Awards. It's my pleasure to be able to share that Onslow County received several Blue Ribbon Awards. Matter of fact, four gold awards, three silver awards, and four bronze awards overall at the state level meeting. I am really fortunate to be a member of working with such talented people and would like tonight to recognize the folks for their hard work. The Blue Ribbon Awards recognize school districts for their outstanding publications, marketing campaigns, excellence in writing, electronic media, photography, and other communication efforts. So if we can start, I'd like to ask someone from behind the scenes to come forward and ask for Mr. Nader Abel Hosen to come forward. So he looks a little perplexed. Nader was actually sick the day of the awards and I was disappointed because really wanted him to be there, was very excited that Nader received... The awards come in three levels, gold, silver, and bronze. And Nader received a gold award for electronic media entitled CTE, Why Not CTE? And he received a silver, a bronze award, for those of you who are at the retirement reception, for the video of when the young children were trying to explain what retirement was. And he won a bronze award for that. So let's congratulate Mr. Abel. Now, I'm not gonna let him go far because I'm gonna also ask someone else from behind the cameras that doesn't like to be out front, to come out front, and ask for Ms. Lori Crowder to come around. Oh, look, someone's already stepping in behind you to take over Lori, it's okay, you can Some of the submissions, some of the entries were submitted jointly and the next three awards are given to Nader and to Lori jointly. And these three awards are a silver award in the, oops, I'm not wrong, the silver award in the Learning Curve and a bronze award in the Why I Teach series. And then last but not least, we had three awards that go to Lori Crowder herself with a gold in photography for Gold Four called Our Future. In photography, Proud to Be One to One, another gold award. And a silver award called Is It Moving in Photography. Well, we didn't just submit entries from the Communications and Public Relations and Community Affairs Department, we actually submitted some entries from some of our other folks that do tremendous work. And they were also recognized, their work was recognized on behalf of the district. So I'd like to ask if Brent and Suzanne Long, if Brent Anderson and Suzanne Long would come forward? While Brent's coming up, we submitted an article that Brent and Suzanne wrote called Teach Like You Tweet. And the organization recognized it with a gold award. So congratulations to you and Suzanne. Next, I'd like for Ross Freeble to come forward. Mr. Freeble, congratulations. The INSPIRA, our North Carolina School Public Relations, have honored you with a silver award for your article on why a one-to-one district rollout is about more than devices and software. We're getting closer to the bottom of the stack. Isn't this wonderful though? Okay. Now this is someone who says they don't often get a plaque, so I'd like to ask for Dr. Leslie Eason to come forward. We might have to have a standing ovation for this one, Dr. Eason. Jeff, I know you're jealous, okay? There's a little plaque competition that goes on around here. So Dr. Eason would like to share with you the award that was given to you and your team for the excellent publication that comes out each Friday called Instructional Friday Focus. And you have been recognized with a bronze award. Congratulations. And last of all, Suzy Olbrecht, who's our PIO, was unable to be here this evening, but she also was recognized with a bronze award for Onslow Connection, which is the newsletter that goes out the day after the board meeting updating our staff on what happens at board meetings. So congratulations to Suzy. One last thing, as we're talking about all the good work that our school district does, I think sometimes pictures share more than words do. And so one of the entries that we will be submitting for the 2016 year is a wonderful video that our video team, Lori Crowder and Nader Abel Hosen, put together that really showcases our district and all the work and all the opportunities that our students have here in Onslow County School. It really is incredible. So we'd like to share that with you this evening. Thank you.
In the Onslow County school system, excellence in education is not just our mission, but evident in so many exciting ways. Our school system educates and supports our students from the very beginning. At our Early Childhood Center and in our six preschool programs in the district, highly-trained staff provide an educational experience rich in resources so our youngest students may actively engage in exploring their own curiosity in learning. Literacy and technology are a focal point at this early age, laying a foundation for future learning success. A wide variety of educational and socially developmental activities happen every day in an Onslow County elementary school. Students participate in small reading groups utilizing research-based best practices, foreign language immersion programs, science and technology activities, global studies, physical education, music, cultural arts, and environmental studies, all geared toward developing a student's critical thinking, reading, writing, and math skills. Appreciating and accommodating a student's learning interests and style is key to the school choice opportunity. Themed elementary schools offer students ways to learn that are customized to their personal talents while building confidence and new skills. Students who attend Silverdale Elementary are part of the Leader in Me, Learning Through Leadership Program. This program is based on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People and equips students with the skills and self-confidence they need to thrive in the 21st century economy. Other opportunities include design thinking, global stewardship, communities in action, and science, technology, engineering, and math-focused themes. At the elementary level, we have two magnet schools with one year-round choice for students and parents. Middle school is a transitional time for students and emphasis is placed on developing study skills and college or career path interests. Assisting in this effort is the Avid Program. Avid, Advancement Via Individual Determination, promotes positive peer group interactions for students, provides intensive support with tutorials, strong student-teacher advocacy, and develops a sense of hope for personal achievement gained through hard work and determination. We are proud to have earned three national Avid demonstration sites and periodically host educators from across the nation to visit and see how Avid is making a difference in our students' educational and future success. In our high schools, smaller learning communities and a wide variety of specialized educational opportunities are available. At Jacksonville High, the International Baccalaureate Program teaches students to be critical and creative thinkers through examining worldwide topics and making real-world connections. At White Oak, Richlands, and Swansboro, Project Lead the Way prepares students for the pursuit of a post-secondary education and careers in math, science, engineering, and technology. Dual enrollment at Coastal Carolina Community College allows students to take college courses and earn credit toward their degree while still in high school. Three of our high schools offer career academies, awarding certificates, making students work-ready upon graduation. Through the innovative Onslow View Closed Circuit Broadcast System, French 1 and 2 classes are offered to our students by our own faculty. Year-long visiting instructors from China at Dixon High teach students the Chinese language and culture and is yet another way we are better preparing our students to be globally competitive. High school-level extracurricular activities enjoy a long tradition of excellence. Our athletic programs boast many state championships and contenders for state titles, as do our marching bands. Musical theater has been a standard for over 50 years and all of our high schools and many middle and elementary schools feature musical productions. At all grade levels, students have access to technology tools to enhance learning and digital literacy. Technology-rich classrooms are equipped with smart boards, laptops, and other multimedia devices. And through the Learning Advantage, the One-to-One Laptop Initiative, Dell laptops are deployed to students in grades 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10 and provide opportunities for personalized Academic enrichment opportunities are also available on every grade level through geography bees, Science Olympiads, spelling bees, Academic Derby, Young Authors Showcase, Woodman of the World Speech contests, and science fairs. In the Onslow County school system, our students are taught and supported by effective professional educators and auxiliary staff, all of whom are deeply committed to every child's success in a college or career path. Many of our Teachers of the Year have been regional or state finalists for the state title and for the second year in a row, our Assistant Principal of the Year for the District has been elected as the Assistant Principal of the Year for the State of North Carolina. Our commitment to our students means a commitment to continuous improvement. Across the district, teachers have been instrumental in developing their own benchmarks for student success based on state standards of achievement. Covey Leadership Training and the Five Choices Workshop have been offered and effectively utilized for educators and staff wanting to hone their professional and personal productivity and improvement. Another aspect to our district's continuous improvement efforts is our participation in the rigorous Advanced Ed Accreditation Program. Accreditation ensures a consistent level of quality through an onsite external review of all systems affecting educational outcomes and under that umbrella makes the quest for excellence a cultural habit. Accreditation is about a district being the best it can be on behalf of the students it serves. The Onslow County school system is proud to have been the first school district in the state of North Carolina to be accredited by Advanced Ed and the first to be re-accredited in 2014. On the horizon for the Onslow County school system, we have the construction of two new schools already in the works and three additional schools planned to accommodate the educational needs of our expanding student population. But this is only a small picture of what happens in our schools every day and we invite you in to see for yourself how our students are achieving excellence in their educational
This evening, the members of the board have a few items of good news that we would like to share and one of those is that we did go on a visit to see an early college in Dupin County. Mr. Williams, Mr. Ridge, Reverend Churchwell, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Wiggins, as well as staff and Mr. Stout went along with some other people. And Mr. Churchwell is going to share a little bit about that.
Yes, Madam Chair, again, I just want to say thank you to Superintendent Stout and the staff for a trip that was well-planned and executed. When we arrived at the college, the staff there was very receptive. When we arrived at the college, the staff there was very receptive. They shared a tremendous amount of information with us and gave us a wonderful preview of what the possibility exists if we continue to move toward this proposal. You can tell that they put a tremendous amount of effort in their presentations because they were very thorough in covering the transportation from facility to the liaisons of the counselors, to making sure each student was going to be successful as they entered to that program. So, I was very, very excited about the possibilities, and also, we were able to engage in some conversations with some of the students as they gave us a tour of the facility, and the students that were there in the classes, and those that were our guides were extremely excited about the accomplishment that they had achieved within that program. So, again, I'm excited about the possibilities that exist for us to enter into such an agreement and the partnerships that existed. It appeared to be that there was a tremendous amount of collaboration and support that was evident there. So, again, I'm just hoping that we can continue to move forward with that proposal, and I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Any other members like to mention anything about the visit? Welcome to?
I'd just like to say that Carolina Community College, also Coastal Carolina, also accompanied us out there. So, there were four members from their staff as well, and the president of the college went with us as well. So, it was a good collaboration.
Any other good news items? I know you have some.
First of all, I would like to congratulate all the students and teachers and staff for your recognition this evening. As I sit here and listen, I just want to stand up and just give a big wow. I'm just so impressed and so proud of all the great work that you do, and had the opportunity to attend the Light Keepers Ceremony, and there were four individual students recognized, and they announced, they shared with everyone that day, that because it was so competitive and the resumes were so impressive, they only had one choice, and that was to recognize all four of them. And that's a tribute to each of you, the great work that you do, so I congratulate you on that. And Ms. Jackson, I mean, you know you started the AVID program at Trussler back in '07 or '08, but what many people don't know is that that program started at Richlands High School when she was assistant principal, and Mr. Spencer was the principal, and they came back and they started it as a pilot, and then it just spread like wildfire. So, this entire county is AVIDized. Thanks to you for being the pioneer and the voice for that, and I thank you for all your work. I had the, this past month or so, which has been a lot of special events in the school district with all-county band, all-county orchestra, all-county chorus, and all-county art. So, it's been a wonderful month. It's where the kids from each of the schools get together and share their talents within a matter of a day and a half, perform concerts, and share their expertise with professional artists, and it's just been a great month, and I can thank all the teachers for their time given on the weekends, and particularly, Ms. Janee Copeland, who is the coordinator of all of those events, pulling it together, and I'm sure she's taking a weekend off because she's been very busy with that. Also, I'd like to congratulate the great, the first-grade students at Queens Creek Elementary. I had a chance to attend a heart-to-heart program where they share some creative movements and dances and music and so forth, and it was just a great day to celebrate, I guess, National Heart Month. And today, I had another great day down at Swansboro Elementary, where they were celebrating Read Across America in honor of Dr. Seuss. So, I had a chance to read to those first graders and get down on the floor with them and just had a great time, and once I realized it's easy to get down on the floor, but it takes me a little bit more time to get back up. But that's okay. I had plenty of help, had plenty of, plenty of help. So, it's been a great month, and congratulate everyone for all the great work that you do. Thank you.
Any others?
Yes, two things. First, I had the opportunity to visit Dixon Elementary with their Chinese parade, and I'd been before, but kudos to Mr. Reed and certainly to Beth Howard, who does that. Really great to see the youngsters with their enthusiasm and their participation. A lot of fun for me with all those costumes and all that. Secondly, to add to what Mr. Taylor said, and we do this every meeting, our spotlight, we have so much to be proud of in Onslow County, and many people don't see that. We're not perfect. We certainly have some areas that we need to work on, and we're going to continue to do that. But my gosh, from the leadership to the principals in the schools, to the teachers, to the staffs, to the parents that support that, and mostly to the students who take those opportunities to do good things, we in Onslow County are on the cutting edge. We don't have to take a backseat to anyone. I am so proud of what we do every day, and I hope you are too. Thank you to everyone who makes that teamwork a positive thing.
Well said. Mrs. Howard, just wanted to thank you for hosting Seuss Mania Saturday. I understand it was a great event, and from the pictures, everyone had a great time, and that's a partnership funded with a partnership with Sylvan and Onslow County Schools, and I appreciate all that you do to keep our children in check on weekends, so they have positive places to go and things to do. If there's no other good news spotlight items, and you're here just for the good news, this would be a good time for you to make your leave if you'd like to. And thank you for coming. We wish you would stay. Next on our agenda, that was a wonderful good news spotlight, wasn't it? It was, really great. Next on our agenda is the 2016 Head Start Project, and Dr. Folger and Teresa Alfen, the Director of Early Childhood Initiatives, will do that presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Stout, and District Staff. Now, don't know about working this thing here. Dr. Folger, are we good for the PowerPoint? Okay. Okay. Well, in your packet, Board Members, you received a copy of the Head Start Grant application documents, which include the Self-Assessment Summary, the Program Approach, the Budget Justification, the Training and Technical Assistance Plan, and the Community Assessment. So, since we are in the second year of, let's see, since we're in the second year of our five-year grant, tonight I'd like to focus on the progress and the outcomes of 2015-16. And I'll start with our three identified goals, which are to address teaching practices, which is done through our class implementation, and CEFL, which addresses challenging behaviors, and also family engagement. Under Class, we are showing our scores for the fall. Our classroom teachers scored above the Head Start Minimum Threshold, and this is in the fall. So, right now, our, there's three domains, Instructional Support, Classroom Organization, and the Emotional Support. I'm sorry, we've got a little error there, but it's the Emotional Support, Instructional Support, and Classroom Organization. Under Emotional Support, we were at 5.8 with 4 being the minimum threshold, and Classroom Organization, 5.21 with it being 3 the minimum threshold, and Instructional Support, 3.53 with 2 being the minimum threshold. And like I said, with the spring scores coming up, they should be higher than at the beginning of the year. Sorry about that. Okay, under CEFL, CEFL is an initiative where we focus on professional development to decrease the challenge behaviors, strategies in the classroom for the teachers, and from 2013 to 2015, we're showing a 3.5% decline, which we're real proud of that score. And like I said, we're in the third year, and we'll be moving forward next year with, continue with the PD. And under Family Engagement, there are a number of long-term goals, such as the family and community engagement and male involvement, but for 2015-16, we were looking at collecting the data on transitioning students into kindergarten, educating the parents on what that looks like, the processes and the procedures. We're collecting data on the visits to their home schools. About 90% participated in a home visit to their school, a tour of the school. There was events for each school. The principal helped us out with that, and also kindergarten readiness workshops, and also as far as tracking the data for those that go in on the registration dates and the open houses at the schools. Under our budget, under our budget, we're at, right at 1.8 million, and the majority of that is spent on personnel and the remainings on materials and contracted services. We get another $24,354 for training and technical assistance. It's described in your plan, but it's a majority of that is PD with the remaining being for materials, because that's specifically for training purposes. And the Community Assessment is conducted every three years, a full community assessment, and I just put down some main points today. It's a very lengthy document, about 40 pages, I believe, but it is, it includes data, a lot of data, and statistics on the economy, on health and social issues, and also on the available resources on how we can address some of these things. And looking at it for Onslow County, you know, our growth population has just increased tremendously, which also impacts, of course, our Early Childhood Initiatives and the school system in itself. Also, our Head Start families in Onslow County, there's, of course, a continuing need for affordable and quality preschool education and childcare resources and services. We serve about 500 children right now in seven preschool sites. With Onslow County Partnership for Children, they serve another 900. We serve 500. So, we feel like that, you know, that's, that's good, all that we can do, and hopefully then that will increase. There's a gap in the three-year-old services across the county, but that is something that we're looking into and hope that that can be, you know, addressed as we move forward. And of course, as far as the county budget expenditures and public safety, public education, and health services is, is, you know, a major need, and teen pregnancy rate in Onslow County is historically one of the highest in the state. So, those are just a few of the areas that were addressed in the Community Assessment. Are there any questions about the grant application, any of the pieces of the grant application?
Do you mind referencing for the public the number of certified staff that we have? Can you call out?
Yeah, we have, we have 31 classrooms in three separate settings, and for each classroom, we have a classroom teacher and a teacher assistant with several more in the classrooms with a separate setting, you know, and management staff, you know, that address different areas that Head Start requires, and family services, mental health, you know, education. We have education specialists in order to meet all the requirements of Head Start and serve the families.
I'm glad you said that. Serve the families, I think is key. Okay, thank you. Any, there's a request from the staff that we approve the Head Start Project for the 2016-2017 year. May I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment. I really think all of us need at one time or another to go and look at the things you do in Head Start. I'm on that board, and so I know there's a lot of stuff that goes on.
And I just wanted to highlight some of the points of the grant, but it is very lengthy documents involved. Thank you very much.
What impressed me regarding the summary report, along with many things, was in regards to the scope of services and support provided by the Onslow County School System, and it highlighted it exceeds expectations in significant areas that ensure children and family needs are met.
Yes. Yes, you know, our-
That just says so much about the great work that you're doing.
Yes, you know, our, you know, our vision and mission is to be a model for other schools or, you know, preschools in, in the state, and, you know, we get calls, you know, we come together, so I think we're, we're meeting that, and we're very proud of that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. You do a great job over there. It's our pleasure to go.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Folger, the calendar that everybody wants to know what's going to be for next year?
Well, Madam Chair, Board Members, again, thank you. This year was my first year working with the calendar committees, or groups of people on the calendar for the 2016-2017 academic year, and thank goodness I had a great example to go by with Mr. Anderson and Dr. Eason's work in prior years, and they were passed on a very informative file that showed me the way. So, thank you to the both of them. We have, this year was a, I guess, a good year and a bad year to be the person in charge of putting together a calendar. Good year in the fact that it was pretty straightforward, there was very little flexibility. Bad year in that it was pretty straightforward and little flexibility. So, basically, the legislation requires that we start school the Monday closest to August the 26th. This year, that is on August the 29th. It's later than it has been in previous years. Legislation also requires us to end school no later than June the 11th, so, or the Friday closest to June the 11th. This year, that is June the 9th. So, the school year will begin on, has to begin no earlier than August the 29th and end no later than June the 9th. Now, if you count every weekday between those two dates, every Monday, Wednesday, Friday there, there are 205 weekdays. When you take 205 days and you subtract out the 180 student days, you subtract out 10 leave days, and 11 holidays, that leaves you with four days that aren't taken. Four days between those two dates that aren't taken with either a leave day, a holiday, or a student day, which means you can have four teacher workdays during the calendar year when students are in session. Two of those we do, we take at our semester break because all of our high schools are on blocked schedules, and so they basically turn their whole classrooms over and start a new school year. So, there are two workdays in January. So, with all of that set, you see, we only had a couple, a little, few little things to play with. And so, the process, we took the initial calendars to the Systems Involvement Team, received their feedback, we made revisions to those calendars, we took the calendars to executive staff, we also, in January, took the calendars to the Superintendent's Advisory Council, which is made of all of the Teachers of the Year from each school, and received their input, and they gave some excellent input. After that, we arrived at two final calendars that went out to vote. Again, it was shared with the Systems Involvement Team in February, and the vote took place on February the 18th. And when, using Survey Monkey, an instrument, a survey instrument, we were able to calculate or tabulate the votes, and Calendar 1 was the, perceived the most votes from our staff and teachers. And so, it's tonight, we bring these calendars to you and ask if you would please, we recommend that you adopt Calendar 1 that received the most votes for our traditional schools and the calendar in your materials, also for Northwood's Year-Round School that was passed 35 to 7 by the Northwood staff, and approval of their calendar. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Motion to approve the calendar?
Madam Chair, I make that motion. I remember the years we fought calendars over and over and over, so.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? I have one that concerns me, is that there are no professional development days on these calendars, and I think it's important that those days be placed on the calendar before these calendars are disseminated to the public, as well as this evening. I know that this will be publicized, but we need, not only does staff need to know, but I think parents need to know when those early release days are going to be.
Yes, ma'am. After the board adopts the official calendar, it'll- Yes, ma'am. After the board adopts the official calendar, it'll go to instructional services, who will place the six early leave days before it is distributed out to the public.
Well, my question is to the board, I wonder if we should, under our purview, shouldn't we be adopting the entire calendar with all of the days marked?
With the professional? If I'm not mistaken, please correct me if I'm wrong, that's something that you do as a staff to plug in later?
This is, this is the first calendar that's come before the board, that's not had those days, and they're early release days.
So the teacher professional development days are on the calendar already. The early release days are not on the calendar. It was shared with me that that happened after the board voted on the calendar, but I may have misunderstood that.
Well, they, they just need to be placed on this calendar before it, it goes out to the public.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Any other comments?
I've got a question. After school ends on June ninth, we've got three workdays. What essentially happens during that period of time? It's, school's over with, all the grades are in, the kids are gone. So what are we having the teachers do for three days?
Dr. Folger, I'll be glad to. And Ms. Williams, I'll just give you this school year as an example. So at the end of the fifteenth-
Dr. Eason, do you mind coming to the microphone so we can hear better?
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Sorry about that. Mr. Williams, what I was saying, just using this current school year as an example, as we approach June of 2016, what will happen with those workdays at the end of the school year? Besides the fact that we're wrapping up testing and getting all of that information together, we'll already have summer initiatives in place where, for example, all of our third graders who need Read to Achieve Camp, we'll set all of that up. But also, starting March fifteenth, we will put out all of our technology initiatives for the next school year, any changes to our learning management system, any changes to our local assessment system. And what we have been very, very fortunate to do is to look at those workdays at the end of the year. And once our teachers finish their responsibilities on their campuses in terms of wrapping up the year, just like you said, we've been able to lock into those three days and go ahead and get our folks into Avid training, technology training, literacy training, you know, really kind of highlighting what we're getting ready to go into for the next academic year.
Okay.
Let me respond to the high schools. On the last day when exams are over, our teachers are still grading exams. We have to go through every, not now, but we have had, to go through every CUNE folder, because you don't want a senior to come up twelfth grade and that folder not be correct, and they're missing courses. So we have to go through every one of those. Then you're also getting for graduation, getting ready for graduation. So high school-wise, those days are still packed full of things to do.
Any other questions?
Could you elaborate regarding the composition of the first committee that all of this went-
That's good.
-to the school system involvement team?
It did. In November, the calendar drafts, and there were three calendars at that point, went to the systems involvement team, which is representative of parents and faculty members. And so the systems involvement team gave feedback on those three calendars. They actually did a like voting or weighed what they thought were good and bad about the calendars and gave that feedback. Also, I fielded quite a few calls from teachers who took those back to their schools to get input from teachers back before the holidays. And they gave feedback on that. So we made some changes at that point and took those calendars to the teachers, teacher of the years and to executive staff. Teachers of the year, the advisory council, superintendent's advisory council, actually felt very strongly about putting more days at the beginning of the year than at the end of the year. And we were just, our hands really were tied this year, because you could only have four workdays between those, August twenty-ninth and the June ninth date. And so they wanted us to put more, so we actually made those changes based on teacher suggestions. And then took it back to the systems involvement team in February and then did the teacher vote, or the staff vote, not just teachers.
I've been on, served on the calendar committee for a number of years, but I know the process we've always used. We've always had a lot of parent input. And I think they were, their eyes just opened when they realized that you had so many mandates and so many of these dates and holidays and so forth that you had to try to fit in. You mentioned earlier, very little flexibility. There's no wiggle room. And you've also mentioned, pretty much you have your hands tied. So we still have a calendar that's locked in. You must be, you can't start school before a certain date, and you have to be out. And you got to get all those other mandated dates in. It's very involved and very intense, but I, but I wanted to emphasize that we had parents from the ground level who were involved in this process, not just all teachers. But I'm aware of the process, but thank you very much.
Madam Chair, where will the, or Beth, where will the inclement days be added into this, if, if we have inclement days?
Well, that's something that we really will have to consult DPI about. We'll first work with our HR department to determine if we have enough hours in. We will be able to possibly use some of the teacher workdays in January if we needed to for makeup day. There really is no space for makeup days. And, you know, while the legislation says you can't go beyond these dates, previous experience has been that schools, if there's no other alternative, go beyond the ninth. So there's a possibility we would have to go beyond the ninth if we didn't have enough hours.
I know this has come up before, and it might be good to take time just to mention why we don't use Saturdays. What is the law? I know what it is, but a lot of people don't. Why, why don't we use Saturdays?
I don't know. The law allows you to go to school on Saturdays. This district has chosen not to, and I would ask for someone to, my lifeline, to help me out on this one.
Madam Chair, historically, we have not ever used Saturdays, so we try to avoid using Saturdays. Obviously, we can't use Sundays. Sunday is a day that by law we cannot use. And November eleventh, Veterans, Veterans Day is the day that's set aside that we cannot use. Typically, as long as we're fourteen days out from a teacher workday, we can utilize the teacher workdays as the inclement weather makeup day. So that's what we've been doing. In most years, we're okay. If we get out over five days, that's when we run into a little bit of trouble trying to find days that we can utilize. Obviously, this year, with the way the calendar is, there is no room for any no days. If you remember previously, we were able to put in at least a couple of no days, one in the fall semester and one in the spring semester. But because of the way the days fill for next school year, we were not able to do that, so. So the answer, I guess-
That's a question that's come up.
Yeah, I guess the answer, Mr. Williams, he asked about, you know, the teacher workday. The law says that you can utilize teacher workdays as inclement weather workdays as long as there, you give at least fourteen days notice, so.
Thank you.
So that's why sometimes we have a workday that's near the makeup, but we can't utilize it. You have to go to the next one.
Dr. Collins, don't we also- Isn't our days over the limit hour-minute wise?
Yes, sir.
Don't we bank time that way?
Yes, sir. We bank time because we're utilizing the hundred and eighty day and, or, excuse me, or thousand twenty-five hours. If you remember, the law changed, they scratched out the word "and", put in "or". So we're, we're going based on a hundred and eighty days, and the, and that's how the calendar's based. But really, what we're looking at is a thousand twenty-five hours of instruction. And we typically run about six hours a day. So if you multiply six times a hundred and eighty, and then you take out the early release days, we still have some cushion, and we have utilized that. And we actually utilized it this year for the first makeup day for students. But then you also have to consider the employee, which is a separate issue, because we have to make sure that they get their time in for work.
Well, we've never utilized that, haven't we?
What the instruction-
We did this year.
This year for the first time?
No, sir. Actually, the year before last, we used it as well.
So we do have that?
Yes, sir.
Good discussion. And it's all Steve's fault, isn't it?
It's all Steve's fault.
And Board members, if I could just share quickly is that feedback from teachers is, they, they understand the difficulty without, they've expressed a lot of angst about there not being workdays throughout the year. But when taking the time to really sit down and explain and work through the calendar, they understand that. That doesn't make it any easier on a teacher. It doesn't make me like it anymore either. I mean, I, I do think it's gonna be a difficult year for teachers not to have very many workdays throughout the school year.
Well, maybe we can get some flexibility relief from our legislators sometime.
We would like that.
There are no other discussion, any comments? Call for the question. All in favor say aye, or option one. All opposed? Thank you. And next is the man that needs no introduction. Mr. Steve Myers, our chief of operations. And Steve, I'm so proud that we're getting some positive news from you, some, some good media from you. So thank you for having a sense of humor.
Well, thank you. They did a good job on the articles, and I was glad to see them. But I've always told everybody that my job is to make my boss look good and to stay out of the paper. I'm not doing too well right now, so. But anyway, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Mr. Stout. For the student projections and capacity update, there's a lot of information that's gonna be covered in just a short period of time. And I apologize about that, but it's, it's very detailed. And so it may seem a little eclectic at first, but two things I would like you to remember, though. One is we continue to grow. We still see continuous growth every year, and that's not changed over the last eleven years. And number two, we continue to actively address the capacity issues that we have with our continued growth. So when we look at each year with Onze County Schools, we're all familiar with NC State's Operational Research and Education Laboratory. We call that ORED for short. And they provide a ten-year student capacity projection. Historically, these projections have been, have been extremely accurate and allow us to identify potential growth constraints throughout the county. The process includes historical trending, identifying new planning segments based on the 2015 land use study, and life birth rates to create student population projections that are then combined with school capacities as identified in the Department of Public Instruction guidelines. That's a lot, a lot of words right there. But the end result are capacity charts that are easy to understand and provide a detailed view of the capacities and constraints at each school. So to summarize some of what ORED has already put together, when we look at the 2015-2016 school year, we see that Onze County Schools' students' population increased to twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five students. This is based on our second month average daily membership numbers. This was an increase of four hundred and twenty-one students from the previous year. I would also like to mention that, that the ORED projections from last year were only off by forty-one students. That is one quarter of one percent error in the projection. Because of this accuracy, this information allows us to make more informed decisions throughout the year. This is just a couple snapshots of some of the documentation that ORED provides with us. And one of the things I'd like to mention is that the month two average daily membership, which you'll see is over the last eleven years, we've seen an average annual growth of three hundred and eighty-three students. And also, we look at the resident live births. And over the last, the trend over the last eleven years was eighty-five births, additional births per year. Why that's important is because when new kids are born, five years later, they're gonna go to school. And so as we continue to see increases in, in live births, we also see increases in the kindergarten classes coming in. This right here is a lot of information on the screen, and I don't expect anybody to be able to see it and read it. But what I would, but the reason why it's important, and I'll stress this right here, Lori, I know I'm not supposed to do this, but this line right here is snapshot where we're at, in the current timeframe. For the last ten years, or since 2004, 2005, the school year, we had, that year, we had twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four students. We have grown over four thousand, two hundred students since that time for a student population of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five students. We've seen a tremendous growth over the last ten, eleven years. As a matter of fact, over the last five years, Onze County Schools have seen an average of two percent growth rate overall. For the next ten years, ORED is projecting an annual growth rate of approximately one point five percent, with an overall population increase of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three students at the end of five years and over four thousand students at the end of ten years. What that means is that the student population in 2025 is projected to be over thirty thousand students. Now, we talked about student population projections, so we know we've got more students coming in. But we also have to look at the capacities of the schools we have, existing schools we have. So along with student projections, we consider capacities at each school. And when you look at the campus, its, and its capacity, you have to look at several items, including what is the building capacity? Basically, what is the brick and mortar capacity of the school? How many physical classrooms they have? How does the demographics play into the calculations? A good example of this is in elementary school. A classroom at one, at a certain point in time in the school year may be under capacity by one or two students. Any given day with as much transition that we have, we may see two or three more students come into a classroom through regular enrollment. That will put us over capacity. So what we do is we actually have a factor in there where we factor it and create an operational capacity instead of just the building capacity. That operational capacity is what we use for our normal capacity calculations for all campuses. In the elementary schools, we use a ninety-five percent capacity calculation. Middle schools, we use a ninety-seven percent capacity calculation. And high schools, because they use block, block scheduling, we use a hundred percent calculation right there. We also have to understand that the increase, that even though our capacities, we may be over capacity at certain times, we do have ways to, to address that. Sometimes it's through realignment. We did that a little over a year ago with some of the schools, which helped us out tremendously in some of our capacities. And also, we have mobile classrooms. Mobile classrooms are used to offset temporarily the additional capacity constraints that we have in, in our schools. This right here is a picture, is an example of how we calculate capacities for each campus. This is Richland's primary, and what you'll notice is that each, each classroom and each room or, in the, in the campus has been identified and has been targeted for a certain specific instructional program, albeit kindergarten class, first grade class, second grade class, or other core, core areas in the school. Once that's done, we calculate how many students can actually fit in there, and we do this for each school. So each school has drawings and has capacity calculations like this. So why is that important? Now that we've talked about capacity for each school and also the student projection, now we have to marry them together and see exactly what it's gonna look like and which schools are gonna be out of capacity in certain districts. So when we do our capacity worksheets, and in your, in your documents, you have capacity worksheets in there, and we'll go over them in just a little bit, but we look at the optimal capacities that we had discussed, temporary capacities, we have a special worksheet just looking at capacities with mobile classrooms associated with the campus. We also look at the construction plans over the next five to ten years. We look at our current enrollment, and we also look at the projections going forward. So when we do that, what happens is we, we start creating these worksheets. And what you see in, on the screen up there is, on the left, on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see two columns, and that's basically our capacities. We know by school how many students should fit into a, into a school. What you'll see over on the right-hand side, where the, where it's color-coded, is the number of students that we are projecting to be in the school at any given time, any given year. So in that process, what you'll notice also is we have it color-coded. If, if the, if the cell is green, that means that the capacity is less than ninety-five percent of the optimal capacity of the campus. So there's no capacity issues at all. If it's yellow, that means that the student capacity and the capacity of the school, I mean, student projections and the capacity of the school is between ninety-five percent and a hundred percent of that total campus capacity. If it's orange, it's up to a hundred and five percent. If it's red, it's over a hundred and five percent campus capacity, which means it's over- If it's orange, it's up to a hundred and five percent. If it's red, it's over a hundred and five percent, uh, campus capacity, which means it's overcrowded. So in your packet, you'll have, uh, two worksheets. One worksheet is, uh, for the operational capacity or the optimal capacity that we've been discussing. And what you'll see there is we have the capacities over the next ten years, because we know we have some construction going forward. Okay? Any, any construction that's already been identified for a certain location, or like a replacement school, we, we go ahead and bump up that capacity number for that school. For example, Dixon Middle School, we know is going to be going, going live in August two thousand seventeen. Well, that school is going to bump up from six hundred student capacity all the way up to close to a thousand student capacity. So we know we can factor that into our, our capacity worksheets here. However, we have several schools that are new schools that we haven't located yet, and we haven't set up districts for them yet. So because for that reason, they're identified as new schools, but there's no capacity associated with them yet, no student projections associated with them yet. You'll notice that when you look at this, um, operational capacity worksheet that's located here, a lot of, a lot of the red that you see where we're over capacity is, uh, is in the elementary, elementary schools. We addressed this through several measures, and one of the, one of the things that we look at is, uh, mobile classrooms. Mobile classrooms, as I mentioned before, are temporary solutions to a long-term problem. So while we put the mobile classrooms out there to address the short, I mean, to address the problem, we also recognize that that's not the ultimate solution. We need to have additional classrooms or student realignment to, to address the, the long-term needs of the district. So that second worksheet that you have is for the temporary campus capacity, which includes our mobile classrooms. You'll notice that on the left-hand side of, of the worksheet, we only have one column for capacity. And the reason why we do that is because with the mobile classrooms, mobile classrooms are moved based on the need, and so it's hard to project out the next five to ten years where these mobile classrooms are going to be. These are the, these are the quick fixes that we have to do during the, at, every summer. So we move campus, I mean, mobile classrooms around as needed. But when you look at the operational capacity that we looked at the first worksheet with the brick and mortar, what you'll see is, uh, we have some hotspots in the, in the county. We have twelve schools that are identified that are over capacity. Okay, that includes Richland's Primary, Richland's Elementary, Richland's High School, Southwest Elementary, Carolina Forest Elementary, Jacksonville Elementary, Jacksonville Middle School, Northside High School, Dixon Middle School, Dixon Elementary, Dixon High School, and Queens Creek Elementary. It's important to note that five of these schools, Richland's Primary, Richland's Elementary, and the Dixon Schools, middle, elementary and high school, have construction that's going on, that's ongoing right now. Those schools will be, the capacity issues will be addressed with the new construction. So when we look at, so at the end of the, end of the day, when we look at, uh, our capacity worksheets, and this is informational, this is information that we use to, to, to react to, uh, capacity needs throughout the year, some common questions always come up. One of them is, will additional schools help us address the capacity issues? Well, the answer is yes. But one thing we need to remember is that we're always catching up, and we're not getting ahead when we build new schools. That's why we have mobile classrooms to address the short-term needs. If we start building schools before the students are there, then what happens if, if the district changes or if the student population shifts to another location in the county? We've built a school that doesn't have, it's not going to be populated to, it's not going to be as efficient as it should be. So what we always try to do is we try to address the needs of the, the capacity needs that have been identified over, over the long term. We have two new schools that are being built, currently being built right now. That's Dixon Middle School, Richland's Elementary School. We also have three additional schools that are scheduled to be built by 2025. Until these schools are built, we're going to be using mobile classrooms and looking at realignment to address exist, existing needs while the additional classrooms are being built. One of the things that's important to remember is back in, uh, two thousand fourteen, the county and the Board of Education came up with a new joint education funding policy. This is, this is extraordinary, because one of the things we've done is we've identified five new schools over a ten-year period of time, and funding's going to be made available so we can build schools basically on a two-year, every two years we'll build a new school. As you'll notice, Dixon Middle School's supposed to go live in two thousand seventeen. Richland's Elementary School, because funding was available, we were able to start a year earlier. And so we plan on having Richland's Elementary School go live by August two thousand eighteen. Then we have another, uh, West Central Elementary, which would be probably somewhere in the location near Catherine's Lake, would be in twenty twenty-one. A new Southern Elementary down by Stump Sound would be in twenty twenty-three. Some expansions for middle school, and also another school, Midwest school's been identified, but because it's ten years out, we're better off to look at the population projections when we get closer to that timeframe to determine if it's going to be a middle school or elementary school or any other, or a high school. We don't know yet what that's going to be, but funding's been made available for that school. So one of the things to note that this, with this, um, with this joint education funding policy and the capital that's been provided, we're going to be able to provide an additional approximately twenty-five hundred seats that are going to be available going forward within ten years. Another common question we have, and we hear this all the time, is won't the right sizing of the military reduce the need for additional classrooms? Every time a bond comes up, every time we have, um, discussions about, um, any kind of capital expenditures, this question always is brought to our attention. And we always continually look at it, and we take it very seriously, because we know that the military plays an important role in our community. But one of the things that we've found out is, no. Currently, we're experiencing the impact of the military right sizing, but we're still seeing continued growth in the student population. An example of this is, over the last five years, our federally impacted students were at forty-four point eight percent of our student population. Today, it's down to thirty-seven point three percent of our student population. We've seen a decrease in federally impacted students by one thousand one hundred and eighty-five students. When you look at it this way, here's another chart that shows basically the same thing. Is at the highest point for the federally impacted, um, students, there was ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight students. It was about eleven thousand students. That was in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. In two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, there was nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-three students. There's that decrease of one thousand one hundred and eighty-five students. What's important to remember is during the same timeframe, our overall student population went from twenty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-nine students to twenty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-five students, an increase of one thousand six hundred and fifty-six students. So we're still seeing a continued increase, even though we're seeing fewer federally impacted students. So in your handouts, as I mentioned, we have the two worksheets, which include our operational capacities and also our capacities based on mobile classrooms. Also, in your work, in your pamphlets, we have the ORED, um, detailed analysis. This is a, they probably do a lot better job explaining this than I can do. But at the same time though, I wanted to make sure you had the information and to try to answer any questions you may have. I will also be posting this online, and they'll be online by tomorrow, so everybody in the community can see it as well. So this is respectfully submitted, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to try to answer any of them that you have.
Any questions for Steve? Comments?
Yes, ma'am. We, we spoke about this briefly before the meeting today, uh, you and I did, regarding, uh, Richland's Elementary. And the, uh, schools, I believe the chart says two thousand nineteen school year is going to be online. According to the chart you just presented to us, we're going from six hundred and fifty-four students to seven hundred and sixty. However, by two eighteen, two nineteen, our, our capacity for Richland's Elementary is going to be eight hundred and seventy-three. We're going to be over a hundred students out of capacity already when we, if we build at seven sixty. You, you're right that we can't keep up with the population. I mean, this, this has been on the drawing board for some years. I'm concerned over the fact, and, and we can look at this, I think it's the next item on our agenda, when we talk about the schematic of what we're going to be doing out there at Richland's Elementary. But this is symptomatic of not just Richland's Elementary. We addressed this issue with Dixon Middle School. We added additional capacity during the architectural drawing and determined that it was, uh, beneficial to build out the extra rooms at that time. And that may be something we need to look at here if the drawing that you're going to present has that ability in there. I'm very concerned over the fact that we need to make sure that when we're building the schools, we take into the capacities that we know that we're going to be going out to. But if we build a school that by the time it comes online, we're already a hundred students out of capacity, that means either redistricting again or, or we're back out to building a new school and putting trailers on a brand-new school property, which is unacceptable to me.
Yes, sir.
So.
There, there's a couple of things that we have to look at when we, and we'll go into this when we talk about the Richland's Elementary School project as well. But, um, one of the things, uh, to note also, with the capacity of seven sixty, uh, we are probably going to be bumping that up, and that's one of the conversations we'll have. Uh, if you look at the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we have a West Central Area Elementary School with additional population of six hundred. So two years later, we plan on, uh, bringing more, more elementary classrooms in that area, which is going to offset it as well. One of the things that we have to be concerned about when we look at building an elementary school, um, is the quality of instruction. What's been, what research is, is proven to us is that, uh, smaller schools, usually around five hundred, are actually, uh, more conducive to learning at the earlier ages. It provides more community engagement with the, with the, with the school, and also the students themselves, uh, interact better with the schools. However, we also recognize that we can't build multiple schools all the time. We have to be good stewards of the money that's been provided to us as well. And so we have increased our school, our school sizes in Osso County, uh, normally between six hundred and fifty to seven hundred and, seven hundred and fifty students at the max. I think the last one was, uh, Stateside, we, was, uh, population was about seven, seven fifty. And, uh, so we have expanded out to that point in the past. Richland's Elementary School, which we are talking about now, is, we're actually looking at increasing it from eight hundred to eight hundred and forty. So we're actually looking at increasing it, even though we recognize the fact that it's going to be larger than what we, we would like, but to be a good steward of the finances that are available to us, we need to make sure we get the biggest bang for the buck with our, with our construction.
Sorry, thank you.
Steve, just to, uh, interrupt here for a second. The core capacity of that school, though, is for about a thousand students. So it will accommodate the difference in what was planned for, uh, for those additional students.
Yes, ma'am.
Aren't we planning to make both those schools, once this is built, K-fives, and will that help?
That's, that's one of the things that we will have to bring back to the board, uh, for their, for their consideration. Uh, but that's one of the things we are looking at is, uh, possibly, uh, bring that into a K-five, uh, scenario. If we do bring, um, Richland's Elementary into a K-five and Richland's Primary into a K-five, one of the things that, uh, is important to note is that Richland's Primary School increases its student pop, capacity by the, because you can actually have more students in a classroom in a K-five environment than you will in a K-two environment.
So that will help us if we do that?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
I think you, you touched on this earlier about, um, the growth and so forth and the size of, of the elementary school. And we're gaining over three hundred students a, a year approximately. I used to hear the phrase, uh, that equals a, a school a year. We're not, of course, they're, they're spread out all over the county, but in most districts, an elementary school is three to four hundred.
Right.
And we're building seven hundred and eight hundred.
Yeah, so if we're, if we're building schools at eight hundred student capacity, it's three-eighths of a school per year.
I pity Wake County where they're gaining over three thousand students every year. And just imagine the, uh, the stress they have and the challenges that they have. The information that you've shared with us tonight, you also share it with, what other stakeholders?
I usually, um, as a matter of fact, I'm going to be sharing this information with the Rotary Club in, um, in, uh, Richlands next week. Well, I'll, I'll take that back on the fifteenth, and then I'll be going back to the other municipalities, off, also extending an offer to let them see the, the student, uh, projections as well.
County commissioners.
County commissioners.
So we're all singing off the same page at the same time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for doing that. It's a lot of information.
So basically, at the end of the day, we're still growing, and, and the information we get allows us to address the capacity constraints for the short term and the long term.
Well, you know, I think all of us have said this, it's a good thing to be overcrowded, because some systems are closing schools. So it's, it's a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
You're still up with, uh, Richland's Elementary schematic design?
Okay, Richland's Elementary Design, um. The new Steve Park Richlands Elementary School has completed the initial schematic design phase. And at this time, staff would like to take the opportunity to provide additional information to the board and the community about the design for the new school. Key items to note for this project is that this is a replacement school for existing Richland's Elementary School, and will be the largest elementary school constructed at this time. The reason for this is due to the continued growth in the Richland's area and the need for additional seats. The school will be a hundred and eight thousand square feet with forty-seven instructional spaces, and will have eight hundred and four, forty student capacity. The school was designed to allow community use of the multipurpose room during non-school hours. Part, part of the agreement, uh, when we received the land for Steve, adjacent to Steve Park, is that, uh, we would allow, we would, uh, provide the multipurpose room as a community center as well. And we are projected to have the students in the facility no later than August two thousand eighteen. So some his, history on this is, land was provided by the county in two thousand seven. It's forty acres adjacent to the Steve Park Richlands. The joint education funding policy in two thousand fourteen is providing us funding for this school. And because we have funding available, we moved the design and construction up one year. And instead of, uh, starting the design in two thousand sixteen, we started in two thousand fifteen, and we plan on having it, uh, implemented by two thousand eighteen. We are also trying to be as efficient as possible and be good stewards of the money that we, we had discussed before. And we're using a prototype that allows us to leverage best practices and design efforts. At this time, what I'd like to do, because I know you guys get tired of hearing me talk all the time, but what I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask that Randy Baker from Pinnacle Architect come forward to present additional information related, related to the design of the facility.
Steve, just as much, uh, clarification, you said two, uh, twenty nineteen, and then you referenced twenty eighteen?
I, I apologize about that, um. It was originally scheduled for design in twenty sixteen and completion in two thousand nineteen. That's when it was originally scheduled.
So it is twenty eighteen.
So we've actually bumped it to two thousand fifteen and wanted to go live two thousand eighteen. So we moved it up a year. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Myers?
Thank you.
Right there, left to right. Madam Chair, board members, superintendent, staff, thank you very much. On behalf of Pinnacle Architecture, we do appreciate you inviting us here tonight to go over the schematic design for the new Richland's Elementary School.
Can you turn the lights down?
What you have here in front of us, do you mind if I point to the board? Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. Um, up here on the right-hand side, you've got cornh, up, shoot, Cowhorn Road. We'll have a pedestrian entrance and also a bus entrance, two separate entrances, so that the, uh, traffic, you won't, uh, collide with each other. Uh, we do have stacking space for over a hundred vehicles on site. Also, the school is placed, Steve Park is back here on the back. And as you can see with the site- back. And as you can see with the site plan, we've got over a hundred and thirty-some parking spaces here for vehicles, for cars. We've got a separate bus parking lot. Also, the reason we've got about twenty or thirty more parking spaces than the zoning ordinance allows is due to the community service for the multipurpose room. And as you can see, there is room here to expand the school. And as Mr. Myers said, built at this point is eight hundred and forty. Core capacity is a thousand. Any questions about the site plan? By the way, the site, I think, is a beautiful site. I don't think we've got any issues with the site. We're getting ready to get sole borrowings to do our structural design. What you have here in front of you is the actual, the floor plan, and I'll walk through the actual building with you. It might be a little bit hard to see. South, down here at the bottom, is Cowhorn Road. The entrance is over here to the left. To the right is the administration area. Going through the hallway to the left, you've got your pre-K, K first grade wing. Down on the left-hand side, you've got your, excuse me, the special needs classrooms on the left. In the center here, you've got your media center, which is the focal point of the school. Going down the hallway, you've got your band, computer, music classrooms. You've also got your second, third grade wing. Coming down the hallway, you've got your multipurpose room, cafeteria, kitchen, which leads back into your fourth, fifth, or fifth grade wing. On your right-hand side is your bus parking lot. And a lot of people in today's world, you just talked about schools being three hundred, four hundred, and today's world, we're seeing, we're designing schools right now into the thousand to twelve-hundred capacity. So it's not unusual. And with that said, the school, I think you'll be very pleased with it. It's all masonry construction, brick veneer. And it is, the multipurpose room here, as you can see, has doorways that this area can be locked off from the school so that when the community uses it, no one can get back into the school for security reasons. Any questions? Comments?
Randy?
Yes?
If you don't mind, can you explain to them about the vestibule when you walk in as a security?
Right. This vestibule here, we will have a large, clear-story vestibule. As you walk in, it will be natural light coming into the vestibule, so that it gives a warm, nice feeling as you walk through. And on the elevations coming up, you'll see exactly what.
And the security?
Security-wise, the doors here that you see, after hours, after school lets in, these doors can be locked, or will be locked. Once a person comes in, they can buzz back into these doors to the office area, to the administration, and they can only go to this one area. Once they're in here, they can't get out unless someone buzzes them in or out.
Is there visibility from the office?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. There is on this, you can actually, there is on the school that some of you visited, there is a visual communication that you can see at this doorway to your admin area. Any other questions?
The multipurpose room and the cafeteria are adjacent with a partition?
That is correct.
Opens for a really nice-sized room.
That is correct. Plays, things like that, this area can be opened up for community school events, band, concerts, whatever you would tend to have. Next. These are elevations. This is the base bid elevation. And what you see, I don't know if you've got a closer view on your monitors, but the brick veneer that you see, metal roofs for the gymnasium or the multipurpose room and the cafeteria. The media center has a barrel vault there, as you see, and the rest of it, you can see, is a low-sloping roof. The entrance that Mr. Myers talked about is a high about twenty, twenty-some feet high with glass, that it's very inviting there to go, to go into. On the back of the school, you will see that the bus parking lot here, the entrance, and it's all brick veneer. The windows that you see are very large. They're about six feet wide by about six feet tall. So you have plenty of natural light in the school. Questions? This is a rendering of, and this is what's actually on the site, of the proposed colors of the school, with, I believe, Richlands Elementary School have the blue and gold or something like that. So we tried to basically complement those colors. Now, this is the base bid. The alternate that we will do, all the roofs will be pitched metal roof, as you see here. The entrance will change just slightly to give it a little bit more feel, but the whole roof, everything, is pitched metal roof. This will be an alternate on the bid package. And this is a rendering of that pitched roof, basically the same colors. We're keeping blue roof. Now, these colors are not chosen. These are just suggestions. We have not picked any colors, things like that, but once we have committees, we will pick the colors on there. Got the backhoe on the back of the truck. It sounds like it's time to get this thing built. We have, we have pressed our engineers. Our goal is to have this thing, our construction documents completed by April, end of April, and so we are going to push this thing as hard as we can, so.
I know there were some concerns. We do have covered walkways for bus students and...
Absolutely. Let me go back to the, this little area right here. This is your bus pickup. There's canopies all around this backside. So you do have canopies there for the bus pickup. And you also got canopies here in front for your parent pickup.
For the parents.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Again, on behalf of Pinnacle Architecture, we do appreciate it. And there again, our goal is to make this school the best one in Onslow County, to serve the children and the end-users in the school.
I'm glad to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. As Mr. Baker was mentioning, currently, the schematic design is completed. Design documents and construction documents are, were scheduled by July two thousand sixteen, but Mr. Baker's doing, is expediting it and pushing it forward. So hopefully, we'll be able to have construction documents by the end of April, and potentially going out to bid in May, May-June timeframe. So, but right now, what we're looking at is students in school by August two thousand eighteen, at the, no matter what. So a couple of things in summary is, we moved the project up one year to address capacity constraints, and because funding was available through the Joint Education Funding Policy. Currently, we're within budget. One of the things that Mr. Baker mentioned was we had an alternate. And we have a flat roof, and we also have a metal roof. The flat roof is going to be, going to be more economical, but at the same time, the metal, in the beginning, but the metal roof stands the test of time. And so it may cost some more, but we're going to put that as an alternate, see what it's going to cost us. If we can afford it, we will go ahead and put that in initially. But we do want to have, and that's what the alternate's for, to see what the cost is for that.
Steve, is the base bid truly for a flat roof, or is it a flat roof?
It's a sloped, it's a low-sloped roof. It's a low-sloped roof. It's not flat.
Clarification on that.
So we don't, yeah, we don't, we don't collect water on that.
We've been that way.
We've been that way before.
Yeah, we've been down that road. So it's a, it's a low-sloped roof. I apologize about that. And then the student capacity, we started out with eight hundred, but based on some of the design and looking at how we were going to do our HVAC systems, we were able to add a couple more classrooms, so we're up to eight hundred and forty student capacity. And as mentioned before, we're looking at August two thousand eighteen. Do you have any other questions about the new Richlands Elementary School? We're excited. We're ready to go.
We are excited, and I know, I know some people in Richlands are excited, too. Thank you, Steve. And you're still up. I told you, you're the man of the hour.
One more time.
Mr. Taylor has a comment.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The slides are obviously very attractive and very exciting, but back in November, several of us were attending the state, Annual State School Boards Association Conference. And we had a little bit of time Monday morning to go and actually visit this school. And I can assure you, if you think the slides are attractive, you need to see the school. It is absolutely very warm, inviting. The principal took us on a tour throughout the school, and we just came out with goosebumps. So, and Mr. Wiggins attended, and Mr. Churchwell, and Mr. Williams. So we all had a great opportunity to actually experience that school in action.
Yes, sir. As mentioned before, this, this is our prototype design, and Simpkins Elementary in Guilford County is the school that was visited, and it's a very nice school. We are very impressed with it, and we are excited to see what we can do with this as well in Onslow County.
No, I'm just, just totally impressed with our visit. The outside is very plain, but the inside is very practical, really, instructionally.
Okay. The next item is the easement for Jones Onslow EMC, for the Richlands Elementary School Site. Jones Onslow Electric Membership Corporation has requested a utility easement to run an underground power line on the property for the new Richlands Elementary School Site located next to Steed Park. This right-of-way easement will be necessary to bring power to the school site. Unlike other requests for utility easements on existing campuses, the work is to be completed as part of an initial construction. Staff has reviewed the request and has determined that the easement will not have a negative impact to the new Richlands Elementary School. So at this time, staff is requesting that the board consider a motion to approve the Jones Onslow EMC utility easement for the new Richlands Elementary School Site adjacent to Steed Park.
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
I've just got a couple of quick questions, and I'm not sure if you can answer these. But is currently, there's a residential area alongside the park out there as well?
Yes, sir.
Is it all underground wiring as well?
I'm, I'm not sure what I'll...
Where are they drawing the power from for this particular, do we know?
It would be, we try to get one, right? That's why I love it. We will give the power company to make sure, typically, sometimes.
All right. Until we, until we till the ground, we won't know if that's possible. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. So we're going to give them the easement regardless, because that's the intended purpose of putting it underground.
This is the same, same boilerplate easement that they use for all, all sites that they have an easement for, for the utilities.
Well, anywhere they can go underground, they go underground. It certainly saves them ...
Yes, ma'am.
Maintenance and repair and emergency responses. Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is our second public participation session. We've had one citizen who has asked to speak on the matter of the federal and state government getting so involved in our local schools, and that's the topic that he will be addressing. David Williams, I invite you to the microphone.
Yes, hello. David Williams, 109 Shadowbrook Drive. Thank you for letting me speak. Almost every year, I hear the same thing. The federal government tells us at the local level what we must do. If not them, it is, it is the state. Then I hear that they both should not do that, and our education system should be left in local hands. Now, let's look at some reasons they may be using to interfere with our local decisions. One, several times now, I have brought forward the concerns of a lack of diversity in our central education office and the top leadership roles. Two, I have brought to your attention what I believe is a lack of respect this board shows toward all beliefs by not having a moment of silence at the beginning of your meetings. Three, I have seen this board lower the standards of our students by allowing an A to be ninety to a hundred, instead of ninety-three to a hundred and down the line. Four, I have seen in the past how it took state officials to get certain things done locally. And five, which I think is the most important, when you limit the First Amendment right of free speech among your citizens during your public comment periods, they have, they then have no choice but to go to the state and federal officials. I would not be surprised if the list could go on and on. I say this for several of these subjects I have brought up has yet to be discussed in front of the public by you. Therefore, in my opinion, they must not be that important to both this board and Onslow County. Therefore, in my opinion, that is some of the reasons why the federal and state governments gets involved so much. For if they did not, for if they did not, where would Onslow County, among others, stand in today's modern, everyday, changing world? Thank you.
Thank you. And right before we get ready to adjourn, would like to recognize, at the same time, thank Counselor Evan Irwin for filling in tonight to be our resident attorney. Thank you for coming. I'm glad that you were here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.